And we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jay, you have anything more for public discussion?
Well, I just wanted you guys to be aware of, get on that George Cummings mailing list, Tammy right now for you two. There's some major issues with that, to that proposed pipeline, well, the whole carbon pipeline. It takes water to transport that. Every site's gonna have to put in about fifty-five gallons a minute to send that carbon down there, so they're gonna raise heck with our aquifers. I don't know what our well setbacks are, but all of a sudden you got at least, you know, you got water to move this product and. So that's your thing. I came down, I'm gonna go to Tammy's office and see what our setbacks are. Nobody knows that right off the top of their head, I'm sure.
Setbacks for?
Presidential setbacks.
Stuff in the works is three thousand, right? No, or no, twenty-six hundred, twenty-six hundred.
Is what our setback.
Yeah, you're, you're bucking up against them, like, you know, the lawsuits, so.
There's a circuit decision we'll be waiting for with Story and Shelby County. And that'll, I'll really decide all the lawsuits. For us and other counties that are in that same path. No update in that.
In a waiting game right now.
Yeah, 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 well, that's, that's the whole thing. You gotta have your ducks in a row and wait. No timeframe on that, if you don't.
No, and the utilities board has not, um, made a decision on their, their side of it either, but, um, they did. They did put a letter in the docket for, um, the new cases that Summit had filed for the feeder lines. He had an update on, Tim sent an update on Thursday, that, um. They just put a letter in the dockets because they haven't really begun and the informational meeting is the first step. But the letter suggested to Summit's, they proposed dates no earlier than June twenty twenty-four. So you can read into that a hundred different ways, but, um, they were given that as a date to have their meetings after, at least, so. Hopefully we get through.
From May sixth or whatever it was, and then I got close twelve, so now you're in June.
So hopefully we get after planting and everything, so. That's positive. Don't know that I have a whole lot more.
Yeah, your date is in the chat, Story and Shelby County.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, sounds good.
Alright. Okay, well.
It goes right through here, where you live?
No, I'm. Where I'm from, yeah, yeah. Actually, if going to the east side, it'll be actually through my brother, but, uh, yeah.
It's gotta be darn close to here, but.
No, we're a couple of miles south, we're about halfway between it, I turned it home and there. We got, we got, we got building place after building place, I don't know what the world ever thinks in there, it's way easier by the four-way bridge. Get up into rowy big piece in there, you know what I mean, but. So, can we do like we did on the, on the wind turbine to a drainage and all that stuff down the road, you know what I'm saying?
We, we do have the policies in place for drainage, yeah. That's already covered.
Are we getting reimbursed for all the charges that we've had so far from?
Yep, and, and actually I had.
I haven't seen that we got reimbursed.
Well, and we, we don't, we don't see when the money comes in, but it was on our claims to pay it out, so. And I, but I, I was gonna touch base with Tammy later after the meeting, double check that we got it, but I think, I think we have, and and actually their CEO had sent an email here a couple of weeks back, and just this last week, I got, while I was down at ISAC, I got a report back from, um, Snyder that we had outstanding bills. And the number, late last night, I put the numbers together, but what's on our bills to pay today correlates with what's outstanding. So, we should have that squared away as long as we've gotten it on the backside, so. Yeah, well, we'll check that out.
Money to come in before we pay it out.
Well, yeah, but that's what we've always done, so I'm sure it's not on to pay out until we've received it.
Yeah, I'm just checking, make sure that we're getting it before we pay it out.
We, we, we send the invoice off, and we don't pay anything.
To Summit first. Yeah, so.
Well, it was, Antco County wasn't getting paid, they had the.
Uh, and I think they had issues with Webster as well, because they have, um, Snyder and McClure also. But I believe they are caught up and taken care of, so, they're.
They had issues, they were behind.
They were, they were having issues and.
I wanna say Palo Alto was too.
It kinda, it kinda came to a head, so it got to, um, they had a, I know there was a conversation.
There was a meeting held or something.
Yeah, um.
And they released a letter.
Yep, and, and I did get an email from their CEO that they had he wanted to reach out and check that they have settled all outstanding charges related to billing with Snyder and Associates. And apologize for any confusion and inconveniences may have caused, well, and some other stuff, but.
Including the course, billing.
Yeah, they're all, they're all in one, yep. So, hopefully we'll be on the straight and narrow moving forward, I guess, but. But yeah, as long as we've received that, which I figured we had since it was on our list today, so. I think we're okay in that category now. So, anything else here on the pipeline, quick? Okay, well, if not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next is, uh, review and approving claims and conservation claims. Is there a motion to that extent?
I'll move to approve the claims and conservation claims.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favors.
Twenty-five hundred dollars for the speaker, approve that.
That was discussed in the boardroom, and it was voted on with the agenda for the safety and training day. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries three to two. Dan, you're up for update for Veterans Affairs. Good morning.
Good morning. I had sent out my info last Friday, hopefully it made it to your inbox there, but, uh. The metrics that we had for, uh, last month, I was looking at thirty-two phone calls, uh, with an increase of hundred and twenty-five messages. Reason I got so lopsided is I was spending more time actually working with claims and trying to table, you know, some of the off-the-wall calls, maybe regarding a flag or something that's not typically standard that I support, that, uh, the public was asking about because they felt it landed in the VA world, so I was trying to manage that. Through that, we had thirty-eight walk-ins, I had thirty-two scheduled deployments, one out of the office. We did one veterans' transport, we had four, uh, hearing aids repaired last month. Currently up to twelve hundred and nine, uh, records in my database. I've got forty-four claims sitting out there waiting to be processed by VA. Uh, six were ready for decision, thirteen, uh, were under development. And, uh, currently, as far as training goes, I'm reserved for training, uh, in our April spring school next month down in Des Moines, and then the National School in Denver in May. Again, that's usually kind of an out-of-cycle, because usually I went to Denver or the National School in June. So, uh, those two schools are locked in. Uh, did some outreach activity with the St. Patrick's Day over in Emmitsburg and Wintmore this last weekend. Um, continuing to work with our department policy and SOP updates and to address, uh, recent changes. The snapshot for the claims, uh, with things moving as slow as they did in February, didn't have any claims approved by VA. Uh, and that's not surprising, since they're a million claims behind and things are all kind of slow. Uh, you have the snapshot there for the, uh, spousal benefits and pension, the veterans' compensation, uh, the burials, um, just calling to the attention, I was able to, to separate that out in my reporting a little bit between the service-connected burials and the non-standard ones. Um, but overall, those benefits on a service-connected burial, uh, by VA are just a straight two thousand dollars. And then on a non-service-connected burial, they offer a little over seven hundred for the plot, a little over seven hundred for the burial, so it's about seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars for a non-service connected, and of course, that does not mirror, nor does that include the two hundred and fifty that they would receive from social security, uh, that benefit outside of that. Uh, still tracking eleven veterans in the county that are rated individually unemployable. Uh, total and permanent, uh, those veterans that are rated a hundred percent. Um, that was forty-five in February, that'll go up by two for March, because I recently had uh, two that were also rated a hundred percent this month, so, that'll change. And I also, uh, added on there too, uh, accrued benefits per month of death. Accrued benefits are benefits that are owed to the veteran at the time that they pass. Whether it's their travel, whether it's something medically, uh, whether it's their disability compensation, because that is usually thirty days behind, so any monies that the VA owes uh, the veteran upon their death would fall under that accrued benefit, so I started tracking that. And in the system, I have a little over hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, for that purpose. The biggest noted change for February, which I'm still trying to wrap my arms around, is the change in law for the PACT Act that expands healthcare for millions of other veterans in addition to what they had already identified. And what I mean by that is, this PACT Act was gonna phase in eligibility for certain veterans to enroll in healthcare. And they advanced that now, so it was supposed to take place several years out, they moved the timetable up to include non-veterans. So, a- and, and they're basing that off of what is called TARA, which is a toxic exposure risk analysis type, uh, measure, where individuals who served may have been toxically exposed due to their environmental and their job application, you know, whether it's solvents, paints, uh, fuels, oils, those kinds of things, so they're taking a look at long-term effects of that. So some of the questions that I have is, is typically enrollment into VA healthcare is based upon whether in fact you're a veteran or not. Now they're including non-veterans, so what's that criteria look like? And then some of it is also based upon their, uh, overall income, and if they meet the threshold to enroll without a VA disability. So there's criteria that's kind of weighted in there, and when this was implemented on March fifth, that's when they sent me the seventy-two slide PowerPoint to say, here's how you're supposed to do this. So I'm still reading through that, I haven't quite figured it out, and then they changed the enrollment form. So then, the next thing was, do the software developments of the program that I use have that new form available for me to use to implement? The answer is no. So then the following question I had was, if I use the old form until I get the new form, will they be accepted? Or will eligibility deny that, because there's quite a significant change on there? And I don't have any answers, so I can't tell you yet, but, bottom line there with the, uh, with the expansion of the, uh, healthcare eligibility for toxic exposure vets, I put in some of the handouts, uh, for your reading at your leisure when you have time. Um, and, uh, that's really kind of the big thing that we're, we're working on. I'm assisting our education committee and, and our education director at the state association level for finalizing our agenda in spring, because I'm a little concerned we're thirty days out, we don't have some stuff locked in, and I'm kind of ringing the bell, saying, come on, guys, we gotta have some stuff locked in here, we've got, if I understand right, we've got a total of a hundred and nine, uh, CBSO's registered for our spring training. I think there might be twenty-five or twenty-six-ish that, that aren't, that aren't registered yet for whatever reason, so that's a leadership's direction to try and figure that out, but, uh, I know at least of a hundred and nine so far. Out of the hundred and thirty others, or whatever there is, so, provided the county's got it right.
Still pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, it's gonna be interesting to try and marry and understand some of these, some of these changes that they've, uh, pushed out. And it, everything's so relatively new, it's just really hard to digest all the changes and keep up on it, so, I got a lot of reading to. But, uh, subject to your questions, that's, that's really all I got.
What are they gonna do to funding for the program if they allow veterans and non-veterans to be in?
Well, um, that's a question I wrote down for the schoolhouse, because, you know, they're, they're working on a shoestring budget, it sounds like. Um, and then, of course, they only were allowed to hire back at, at a benefit level, fifty percent of what they let go. And I'm sure that that budget is not an endless cycle. I, I, I really don't have an answer, but yeah, that's, I mean, they generated in a, a brand-new form. When you generate that, you wouldn't think that would cost that much, that's pretty significant, and there were major changes, because I saw it one time on a website that disappeared, so I, I'm like, wow, you know, but, yeah, we're bringing in, we're bringing in more veterans, and then we're bringing in, uh, service personnel that don't, don't meet that definition, yet are encompassed in that. I don't know what those numbers look like, but, you know, you figure guard, you figure guard reserve, and here in the state, we've got about eighty-five hundred to nine thousand, uh, national guardsmen, uh, in just our state, Texas has got about twenty-five thousand. California's got fourteen or eighteen thousand, I mean, if you start looking at just one-third of those numbers as a conservative estimate, that's pretty significant, and where's that money coming from? That's a good question, I, I don't have an answer.
So Dan, are they talking only, um, non-veterans that are military personnel, or are they talking, um, civilian con- civilian contractors and family members, or?
Uh, this would be strictly service personnel that maybe don't need the title of veteran currently. But, uh, you know, I don't know if that's gonna get expanded in that or not. It's kind of hard to say. Primarily, most of the benefits that are extended to family members or dependents is if you are serving on active duty. Or if you are a veteran that has a disability and are otherwise eligible to receive, uh, the chapter thirty-five benefits under CHAMP VA. Those medical benefits are extended to a veteran's dependents and spouse. So, and, and that gets to be kind of a whole nother monster, but I do have, uh, two veterans for this month that meet those CHAMP VA requirements, so I have to read up on that a little bit, because I'm sure they're gonna wanna take advantage of that. It's just another form of insurance that they can utilize through, uh, through VA, so. But yeah, the money piece of that, you know, the, the, the ideas are sound, but then again, the trouble is, how are you going to fund it, or in what manner are you going to fund it? And that's what's not real clear. Um, I did sit in on a Zoom video, uh, as an observer, wasn't allowed to ask questions when the when the undersecretary and the secretary were putting this out. It was actually coming from Washington, but I was watching it in my office, and so I wasn't part of the Q and A piece. But I kind of started jotting some of that stuff down, because at Nationals, that's where the folks from Washington show up in the room, and then you can actually go up and talk to them, and that's it's kind of one of the key things about attending Nationals is, you can get some of those answers or raise those questions. Um, so, I, I did hear from my district president last night, uh, some of the legislative issues for our state association that we were working on, additional training monies specifically for school at Nationals. Um, she had stated that the legislation passed. I said, wonderful, can you be more specific, because there's like three or four hot buttons out there? One of those was the three thousand dollars in addition to the ten, specifically slated for just education at Nationals. Um, and of course, there were three different ways they were proposing how that was gonna be funded. So I don't have some answers on that, but when I do, I will tell you what I know, I'll just, I'll drop it off in an email and we'll cover it next month a little bit more in detail, but there were, there were some other, uh, tertiary legislative things with, uh, background checks, fingerprint cards, PIV cards, to gain access remotely to VA computer systems. And making that requirement an Iowa code mandate is part of my job. Which is no worries here, because I've done all that, but there are other counties that have not. So we're trying to get everybody on board to meet the minimum, uh, training requirements to best allow that service to the veterans, because with, if I didn't have that access, I'd be pretty much handicapped and hindered in really being able to take and have the visibility necessary to look at claims and and troubleshoot things and do those things in a proactive manner, so.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah, it, it certainly is, and I, and I kind of get a feel for what the regional office has to go through. And ideally, although they can do my job, they're, they're just as skilled at that as I am. Their primary forte is to deal with appeals, uh, reworks, mandates from the higher court. So if they're doing all this appellate stuff and administrative law, you know, that really takes a long time because of the research and the in-depth, just with the federal code. And then to have veterans come in from outside and say, I wanna file a claim, not that they can't do that, because they, they offer that, but they will directly ask, ask that individual if they could take that up with their, their county veteran service officer. Because we're kind of the first, that, that, where the rubber meets the road, that first stop. Some do, some don't, so, I mean, it's not like they're gonna turn them away or anything, they're still going to, uh, you know, help the veteran and follow those those benefits, but some of those service organizations, I gotta tell you guys, there's only one person working in the office. And so when I start feeling bad, because I'm sitting out here by myself in the county, uh, just think about those guys that are working with one or two people in the office for the entire state and nation. Um, it gets really, you know, hectic at that point. So when I'm down there in Des Moines, I usually go into the regional office and talk to those folks, try and put a name to a face and, and have a cup of coffee with them or something. Just see how they're getting on. I try and find out what is it that we in the field can do to better accommodate you, or some trends that maybe we shouldn't be doing, or that we should do to help make things better. Uh, and I think if I remember right, last month I talked about, they set up a remote, remote point access to a SharePoint website on the VA intranet, uh, remotely, where we can go, they have news updates, they have your public contact information for movers and shakers in the regional office that can help you. If you have an IT issue, you have a claims issue, you have a, uh, various other subcategories of different types of claims unique and specific, whether it's, uh, military sexual trauma or post-traumatic stress. They now have identified certain key people, that that is their specialty, so if you, if you have an issue with something like that, you now have a direct go-to person that you can identify and communicate with, so. That's very helpful, because I certainly don't know of the number of employees that work in the federal building, who they all are and what they do. But, uh, that's a big, that's a big bite just to try and absorb as well. I got about this much above the waterline, everything else down below, I'm not really sure, but I'm figuring it out.
Do you think they all know what they do in Washington?
I do not kid myself for one minute that they do not, that's why they have pages and interns and everything else to kind of handle all of that detail, but I don't get a pager and intern or a, don't you?
Yeah, you've never seen an unfunded mandate.
Exactly. Alright, well, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Alright, next up is Family Farm applications allows and disallows. Yep, we're all in our packet here, um.
Oh, I don't know if the Family Farm ones are in there, that's a bigger stack.
Yeah, the, the chart and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
All that stuff is in here. Anything you wanted to highlight and explain quick, otherwise the code section and all that's in here. Does anyone have any questions?
We have a whole lot.
Yeah, Chris, you said this morning, there was quite a few and some cleanups that probably could have been caught earlier, but.
Yeah, they should get a lot of cleanups, so, we were, she returned on that, so.
If there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the allows and disallows for Family Farm. Okay, thanks, Roger. Jack, you second, okay? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Alright, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Then, next up is Agland, allows and disallows, um, the letters and stuff are in our packet, does anyone got any questions?
There was a correction Brittany's making, in one of the paragraphs, Kyle noticed that it touched, had Roger listed, not on the signature, but in the paragraph, so she's changing that now, so that will be updated.
The rest of the, like, the names and the information on the letters, it's all in our packet though, so, any questions or anything on that? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some of them.
Okay, do we have a second?
A little second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
We all get letters in this group?
Yes.
Yeah, all the letters that are in our packet. So I'll have a few things to sign here after the meeting.
Just a few.
Yeah. Alright, we are up to Doug. Carter, you wanna give him a call?
I'm gonna go grab those maps for the pipeline that Roger wanted to cut.
Yeah, good morning, Doug, uh, we're, we're ready for you. Yep.
Have you got all positions full, or?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
We just think we still have one opening in Dakota. Yeah, and then the mechanic show. Unless you hear different today. Unless you hear different today.
Yeah, give it a few minutes, we'll find.
Roger wanted a copy of it, so we printed one off. Roger wanted a copy of it, so we printed one off.
Gotcha.
Did you have a copy of the pipeline map? Would you like?
She got it blowed up better than the client did.
It's colored.
It's in color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we are.
Only the best here in Chris's county.
Yeah, yeah, there we go.
Just, just for you, Jay.
Yeah, but the tiles are anything like that, but otherwise she did good. Curves are blue right there.
Yeah.
That stands for water. Hi, Jay.
Hello.
Good morning, Doug.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning. Nothing, how are you?
Good.
Good.
We are up to construction and the right of way, Doug.
Uh, yeah, we have a couple of different requests. I'll you I'll do the Midland Power request first. They are requesting to rebuild some overhead power lines. They're important in Buffalo Township uh along 290th Street. Having that made the board would approve approve of this request.
Okay, Roger moved to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
I'll just bring it to us.
Yep, that's fine.
If that's okay with you.
Yep.
Um, the second request.
You you got who made the motion, second?
I did.
Okay.
Uh, second request is from, good morning. Andrew Strucker, uh, would like to put a tile underneath of 30 Avenue. There is a a slide of that in your workbook. I'm gonna log on here quick.
This is the one that we voted on to allow it across previously, right?
Same, same place.
Yeah, I believe so.
I talked to Andy.
Into PAC one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So Strucker crossing is the name of the file. And Andy has been visiting with uh Scott Mansky and Doug Crouch and they've gotten, we've gotten permission. Todd Tilges is aware of it. So they want to cross the road there, uh 30 Avenue. And working with Marge a little bit, there is a in the minutes of it'd be PAC one open ditch minutes, February 28 of 2023. Uh, the request was to run a private tile from the south half of the southwest corridor of section 16 into the uh open ditch of PAC one. It sounds like Jamie Frieders, who owns the north half of the southwest corridor, is going to hook on to this tile that Strucker is putting in his property. Having said that, I don't know if he need, does he need to do something with the drainage district?
It's a private tile, but.
It's, it would be draining.
Seventy-nine? Be, yeah, coming out of seventy-nine.
Water, yeah, it would be draining. It'd be have land from another drainage district draining the ditch. I talked to Marge and she thought that there was in the reassessment, some changes on that. So it might be better if I come up during drainage. We talk about it during drainage before we act on this permit. I, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure that you and the drain you as trustees acting for the drain are aware of it and have located.
Yeah, we can handle that during drainage.
And then we can take care of actually approving that. Okay.
Well, even here a portion of Jamie's depending on where he hooks into it at, would be in PAC one.
There is some, yeah, but my understanding is that.
It would be more acres.
It would be more.
Okay.
It would, wherever that divide is there, I'm not sure.
Yo. Sounds good.
So that's uh two, two requests. I would like to visit just a little bit about uh the Metzger tile crossing. I, last week we talked that they had went and worked and we were not contacted about that. And my understanding is that they've talked with at least two supervisors. So there is a folder there labeled Metzger. And uh.
Roger, you were contacted about it too, weren't you?
Yeah.
You were too guy.
Yeah.
So Doug Crouch is here. Doug went and looked at this last Tuesday. Uh, we do have some photographs and some sketches trying to explain. We did find some uh concerns with the installation. And these are again are in your folder. We'll just first look at, it's called Metzger one. It's a photograph. And this is a view looking east. It'd be the south. Here's the drainage ditch that they put a pipe into. This is the road right of way here. And this lap here is where concrete pipe, our estimated location of where the concrete pipe started. We provided 72 feet of concrete pipe. There's 66 feet of road right of way. The idea being then that approximately three feet of pipe on each side of the road right of way where the joints would be so that if there is ever a problem with that joint or further on, it's in the private, it's in private land. So we go to the next photo. This is the the north road right of way. Approximately right in this location and here's where the concrete pipe ended. So there's there's plastic, my understanding, there's plastic pipe from the concrete pipe here to the road right of way.
They centered what you're saying, right?
It is supposed to be centered on the road right of way. Yeah, so three feet. All, everything under the road, everything in the road right of way is concrete pipe. Tied and wrapped. This is a view looking in the corrugated metal pipe that was extended to drain into the drainage ditch. You can see the ties here. This is typical installation. Uh, the thickness of the pipe is not is not, the threads on the ties are longer than what the thickness of the pipe is. So this is a very typical installation. It works for us. And they put the corrugated metal pipe right over the tongue of the of of that core reinforced concrete pipe. There was no fabric. It's not tied. I don't know what drainage what the drainage district requests on that. I don't know if the drainage district, how the drainage district takes care of this, these types of things, but this right now is out on the private property.
Just a bunch of them.
Yeah, just butt it up against each other. This is looking at the outside of the corrugated metal pipe. First thing, these are rivets here and there's rivets right there. Those rivets are supposed to be if you're looking at the pipe, three o'clock and nine o'clock. They're more like one o'clock and seven o'clock. What happens is that it gives the opportunity for water to go underneath of this lap here, causing problems. Uh, so we try to put them on the horizontal side so that if water is flowing in the bottom of that pipe, which it does most of the time, it does not have an opportunity to uh erode and get outside of that. And then this lip here, if you look at that, uh, the pipe is installed backward so that if water is flowing, it has an opportunity to go outside the pipe again. And there are cases where corrugated metal pipes put it backward, the it just erodes. It just, uh, the water comes out and erodes everything. So concerned about that.
Was there a fall on the pipe?
Uh, we were not able to really, you know, do that. This was all covered when we got there, so we couldn't even tell exactly. And then again, uh, this would be looking to the west, road right of way, approximate location of where that concrete pipe ended. And this is uh looking west again, uh road right of way and I believe that's the point right there where the concrete pipe ended. So that's the photographs. Then if you just uh so if you look at a cross section, we have right of way thirty-three feet on the center, off the center line of the road, both ways sixty-six feet. We provided 72 feet of reinforced concrete pipe. They have approximately eighteen feet hanging to the south uh that is over on the private property, approximately twelve feet that is on uh within the road right of way where we have plastic. Ideally, like I said, this reinforced concrete pipe would be outside of the right of way here, outside of the right of way here. We provided 72 feet to be in sixty-six.
We didn't provide the culvert?
The piece of corrugated metal pipe, we did not. We do not know where that came from.
We didn't supply ties and fabric?
We, we supplied reinforced concrete pipe, ties and fabric.
So the pipe would have been too short then the culvert if they had done correctly?
Well, they would have had to provide enough material to extend it out there.
Right.
Yeah, that, that is, you know, I guess that's not the road department's.
No, I'm just making an observation.
Right, no. That's fine. Then was that, that was a two-page drawing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The only shows those corrugations.
Yeah, and then just to kind of show you as it is installed, wa- if water's flowing from the right to the left, water has an opportunity to flow, get underneath here and uh erode that material. If it's installed correctly, the flow of water, it goes over the lip and keeps on going. So that's, we're talking about overlapping. That's what we want to get there, so. So anyway, we, we would like to write a letter to the applicant Metzger and let you know about these problems uh that we have. Uh, I, like I said, ideally that seventy-two feet of pipe was, would have worked in the sixty-six feet. Uh, it was supposed to be wrapped. It is not. All joints were supposed to be wrapped. They're not. I can there's, there's different options we have. I mean, we could obviously have them take all the material up and reinstall everything. Uh, we could provide some more material and have them reimburse us for the new material. We could do it ourselves and put the cost according to our agreement, do it our, do it, have the road department go out and do the work and assess all the, all the costs back to con, uh, back to the per applicant. We could do nothing. I wouldn't recommend that. I think it needs to be repaired correctly. That's for the road. For the outlet into the ditch. As drainage district trustees, do you have concerns?
Is that something maybe we could have them dig up the or fix the corrugated pipe rather than the the whole project? I mean, I, I understand the fabric wasn't installed with it. There are a lot of tiles around without culverts, without fabric on them, just historic. And I know that's a, a good practice, but fairly new practice and big scheme of things. I, so I just didn't know, is that kind of a, maybe a compromise or the issues would be fixed then?
We, we got a couple of things here. It's not really, it, I don't know what the definition of new, but we've been doing it for thirty years, forty years. It's not something that just started. And every, this is the first time that we've ever had a problem with this practice. Uh, we've been doing this with a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of road crossings. So yes, we can, we can do that.
My issue with the pipe is it's not going to fail the first twenty years, but if you have water that starts eroding, then the pipe's life is severely diminished because you have water undermining it where you wouldn't if it would have been installed correctly. So when you're doing a new project, you should probably put the pipe in correctly.
And.
It's just common sense. And as far as the other end, we don't want plastic in the road ditch.
No, I, I, I I believe that we, we have the concrete pipe out there for a reason.
Yeah.
So they did not use all the material that was provided?
No, he, he started it too far to the south.
Okay.
So it did not have enough material to get to the north. Um, we can, we can simply get some more concrete pipe and extend it to the north so it's out.
Are those eight-foot sections?
They are. They're about a thousand dollars a piece right in that area.
Twenty, twenty prices.
And about, you know, fifty dollars for more ties a piece.
Sure. Doug, do you know how much coverage over that last one? How much cover?
In the road ditch, approximately four and a half.
Well, it's a big cut.
Okay. That was, that was when I was in the field doing measuring from any pipe to get those applications. They didn't take a measurement? I was outside the road right of way. I wasn't concerned. But we weren't contacted to see it either.
Yeah, it, it, if we if we would have my understanding is there, there was some phone calls made. There was no voicemails ever left. I know Friday I was the only person in the office, whether I was on another phone line when that happened, but there were no voicemails. And it does state clearly in our, our agreement that forty-eight hours are supposed to be given uh either by writing or by calling the office phone number.
We contacted after the fact, right?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I if you want to know the whole story, there was a phone call about another location of a culvert and it was brought up that they just completed this project. And that was the first that our office was made aware of.
Anybody else?
Is there, is there anything you would like to say?
He's uh.
No, he's, he's a BMW.
Oh, okay.
Nate.
Yeah.
He's here on another. He's here on another.
Yeah, I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to dig up through the road again, but the,
Well, I, I guess I think that, like I say, we, we have a couple of different ways and we'll offer them options for the road department. I guess I, what I'm asking about is, do you want that metal pipe left as it is? Or do you want that metal pipe put in correctly?
Right now would be the best time to dig it up and turn it around.
And then set it on the right tilt.
Be best long-term to do that.
Yeah.
Well, it's, we're dealing with money for the Drainage District there, and if it fails because if it's put in incorrectly, then it goes back to the Drainage District to fix it, so the guy that originally put it in sold it, so it's right to start with.
Yeah.
And I do not like plastic going through the road right away, so.
Well, we'll get that corrected. We'll give them, we'll give them options of what they, what they can do.
I think it should be a section of culvert, put in, that's the least.
Well, a couple of sections, so they'll be in there and, I mean, they'll have to reimburse us for that.
Because that tile outlet should last for a hundred years, let's do it correctly, that's my opinion. I don't know, somebody else who disagrees, now it's time to talk.
Yeah, no.
Does that metal pipe need to be tied to anything?
If you don't tie it at the tips, you're going to have a joint that fails.
Who came in?
I, I mean,
Is there a deal to do that, Doug? Is there kind of a factory deal or did you try?
Well, there's, to be honest with you, there are collars, my understanding, there are collars that are made to actually go over
Concrete.
Concrete to metal. And there, there are collars that join metal pipe together.
Yeah, right.
They, they make, these things are, are, are available to be purchased, whether they're purchased and used.
Those aren't, that pipe's the first thing that they, that's first to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anything you could do to add life to the pipe should be done.
But I think keeping that connection is important.
The alternative is make them dig it up, like say, hey, you gotta put that collar up there, you gotta buy the pipe?
Well, we will write a letter and I'll copy the board supervisors' ones, uh, that letter, and we'll move from there.
Okay, yep, thanks Doug.
Just so, I just want to make sure everyone was aware of this. All right. Uh, construction up at Buffalo Township, West Line Thirty-three, uh, they pretty much have that superstructure out of there and they're working on removing the substructures now. Uh, down in Gutters, they're driving false work, getting ready to start forming up the deck. Today we had a letting for our, uh, this summer's asphalt work. So we'll be finding out, uh, what those prices are, and it'll be put on the agenda next week too. Uh, we hope anyway we'll receive in all the information so we can award that contract. Uh, Lakota position, we did hire, uh, applicant there, Scott Phelps is his name. So he is working, started working yesterday, uh, looking at some requests for quotes on some equipment. Uh, working on the program. Uh, the Michelson Marsh Bridge is, are there plans for a, a loan there, internal loan for construction? Do we have anything yet?
We haven't talked about it.
I don't, no, I don't know.
Correct.
What's that?
We need an internal loan in order to do it.
Do, is the plan to get that, have that constructed this year if everything, if we get our right of way, which we're very close on? Get it to the road right of way?
Yeah. So we don't have anything available left for the loan that we do have?
There's three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy thousand, Tammy. But that's, that's going to be a half a million dollar project.
Okay, so how much more do we need? Another hundred?
Hundred fifty. Uh, we gotta get a, we gotta get a good estimate. Do you remember that estimate, Doug, by any chance?
I don't remember.
Five hundred to six hundred thousand?
I think it's going to be more.
More than six hundred? Okay, we'll get our estimate put together, we've got a couple of projects.
There's a hole there, the last two.
Yeah. So, I'm going to put that in the program, I guess. And, uh, if we, if we get everything, we'll have to do the process. Uh, we have a zoning meeting scheduled for April one, I think I talked about this last week. And the board supervisors then, I'm going to have it on for April two to, uh, consider the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the annual meeting for Waste Management is April tenth at seven o'clock. That's all that I have.
Um, I guess it's good both of, both Doug's are here. Do you have anything for Craig Runksmeyer's tile put together yet? Or anything on that situation?
We don't know, we don't know where the problem is.
Well, we know there's a problem through the road.
And why do you say that?
Because the fall is backwards.
We don't know if, we don't know if there's, we don't know the whole grade of that tile and what it's supposed to be. If you go out into the field, I mean, we just know in the road, in the road that there's some sort of a issue. But where that issue is, we don't, we aren't sure.
What do you mean, you're not sure where the issue is?
Well, there could be a sag on one side. There could, you know, it could be all to grade and there could be a sag on just that one side. Without going out there and studying everything, you gotta look at the whole grade of the tile, not just two spots in it.
So you want the whole thing checked for grade or what? Cause I mean, I guess, I think Craig wants an answer of what, what's going to be done about it. And we know the grade is off through the road, so.
We know there's one spot that's lower than the other, but is, is that just need to be brought up? And is that an intake there too?
There's no intakes.
There's no intakes. Are you, is, did, did they, did they do some tiling and do some work, hooking tile onto that, on the west side?
Uh, they may, yeah, there's tile west of there on this field.
But they didn't hook it on, I mean,
They run a jetter up through there.
Yeah.
At one time, in the last few years.
But you're,
You, you don't know if the,
If you go, go from the west and the tile's coming along and then there's just a sag in it and it goes through the road at the right grade, you, you gotta figure out everything.
It's, it's lower on the west side, which is the upstream side, or it's, it's lower there than it is on the east side.
Okay.
By five inches.
So again, does it, is it everything on the west side lower? Or is it just a sag in the west ditch on that one point?
I believe that,
There's one on the field, there's a west,
We have no idea.
With that private tile,
So are you guys looking at that or who's looking at that?
No, we just look at the road.
Do you know, out in the field, if the grade is correct on the top, the top side? Because if they match the grade on both sides of, of the right of way, that's all they can do. If the grade is lower out in the field, then how are they going to match it up in the road?
Correct, yeah, we, there, there's more study that needs to be required.
There's a, there's a six-inch tile and it goes up five inches through the road right of way.
Yeah. No, we have, we have one, we have one spot on the east and we have one spot on the west.
No, I think we have two spots on each side at least.
Okay, how, how, what's,
Right, from the east right of way to the west right of way is,
And what, what is it doing east of the, east of the road? What's the tile doing? If the water's,
No one dug that up yet.
If, if the water's continuing to flow, if it's supposed to continue to flow east and in the field, it's,
There's not an, there's not an issue on the east side and there is an issue on the west side with water sitting there.
But if the water on the, if the tile on the east in the field continues to, at the same grade, would that have to be lower?
All the way down the connection.
Depending on what's out there, yeah, I mean, don't know, but, cause Craig asked me for, asked what was going on and nothing had been brought up here, so that's why I'm asking about it. Cause we know there's a problem through the road.
I, I mean, you want the road department to do this work?
Well,
I mean, we'd have to go out and locate a bunch of tile?
I'll, I'll, I'll get it taken care of with a contractor if that's what it takes, so. I guess I'll get more information, we'll bring it back.
Somebody.
I, it's not county facility west of there, it's private. It just crosses the road on our maps.
Okay, so if the private is low and it hooks into a, a, a facility, then what are you going to do with the facility?
The private tile doesn't go into the road ditch, it's county through the road.
But what happens if you fix it through the road and then your tile's a foot higher than the private tile on the other side of the road? That's what I'm getting at.
I understand that, but that's why I asked if anything was being done or where that was being left. Cause I don't think he wants it just to be left off in, in space and roll a calendar months or years with not hearing anything.
But he'd put in there, have to determine his grade on his private tile before you start exploring through the road or don't you think so?
It's already been explored through the road.
And I agree with you, it runs in the wrong direction, it runs in the wrong direction. But if you got private tile that's too low on the other side, how are you going to fix it?
Yeah, but to what grade do you repair?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get exploration done out in the field on the district facility and we'll move from there.
Who's going to be doing?
I'll get a contractor.
But will it be a land surveyor or an engineer that is, is taking the, getting the information? I, that's, I guess, I, if we could somehow talk with that person,
I, I think a lot of,
Communication with them, I would appreciate it.
I think the contractors that put tile in can check grade around here, so.
Again, I, I'd just like the cooperation of, of, uh, visiting with them. Cause they're going to be, they're going to be doing things in the road and it, it would be,
No, they'll be outside the road. They won't have to do anything in the right,
They're not going to tie into what the elevation's then that we,
We can tie in, there's a culvert there to correlate.
All right, and, and just that cooperation would be very, very beneficial.
It would have, it would have been nice to know that nothing was being done, uh, that,
I, I, that cooperation again would be very, very beneficial and I would appreciate, uh, if, if together we could get this done.
Doug, I did have a real quick, or were you, were you done with that?
No, go ahead.
I just had a real quick question. The railroad crossing, um, on the Addison Blacktop, right close to McGregor there, um, I think a lot of outflips there. Um, is that going to be redone at some point in the future? I know that would be the railroad pro, was that, would that be the railroad's issue or, or the county or the both? As far as, it's really rough, especially on the, when you're on the east side of the road going north.
Yeah, that's, we've got an application for surface repair on that.
Okay.
Uh, I don't believe the railroad has signed off on that. But we've made the application, uh, there are placards on the side of every railroad crossing that has an identification number, that, a unique identification number. And there's a phone number, and if people, uh, if there are problems with crossings, it's my understanding that that number is to be called.
Okay.
I have met with railroad officials at that particular crossing over the last handful of years. Uh, Cassuth County has repaired portions of that, the railroad has repaired portions of that. Uh, it is frustrating. It is the railroad's responsibility. And Cassuth County is ready to participate in getting that repaired.
When they're ready. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
That though right of way.
This is, yes.
I'm going to hit down.
Thank you, Doug.
Did you want to do this Stricker one?
Sure, yeah, since Marge is here, we can certainly, thank you.
I, I did just have another question for, uh, engineer. Are we hauling gravel on roads yet or still stockpiling?
We're stockpiling right now. We've had a couple of roads where we have put some gravel on because of activity, but there's still opportunity for snow, snow removal, and we are concerned that if we put spot loads on gravel roads that we will end, that'll end up in road ditches. So, um, we are not supposed to be putting that on. I've told them not to do that.
Okay. I guess, I know other counties have been putting material on their roads for weeks already, so I don't.
I've been driving gravel roads, I, I see spots where, yes, they may, we've been maintaining them. Uh, I've been able to drive fifty-five miles an hour on gravel roads. I was just out yesterday, uh, driving gravel roads. So, in an effort to make sure that we do not, uh, put new material in the road ditches, I've decided not to do that yet. We still are in the middle of Marge. People need to remember that, so.
Okay, hard to believe some days.
All right, we want to go to, uh, Andy Stricker's road stuff.
Marge, we talked about, uh, Andy Stricker and, uh, the road crossing and the, this is all in the southwest corridor, section sixteen or way more. Uh, town, the Drainage plat map show that those, the north half and the south half are in that, uh, DD seventy-nine, I believe is what it is. In the last reassessment, when that was done for PAK one, was that all included in that?
Yeah, as an outlet fee.
So, does anything extra need to be done as far as, uh, the road crossing at Jamie Frieders? The north half of the southwest corridor was, uh, was put on with the,
They're fully in the PAK.
All those acres.
That got absorbed.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would recommend that the board would approve this request and for Andy Stricker.
Okay, do we have a, I'll, we'll pass that down, let everyone take it.
I'd move to approve the request.
Okay.
Right of way.
Do we have a second? Roger, you second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Say nay. Motion carried unanimously.
All right, here's a, thank you, Marge. All right, thanks.
All right, anything else, Doug?
I do not have anything.
Anything else from the board? Anything else from the board? Alright, thank you. Um, BMW, we're ready for votes here.
Morning, Nate.
Morning.
Got the quote for, I'm gonna be doing the west side of the county. I traveled all those ditches the other, uh, couple of weeks ago now, they all look pretty good except for a couple that maybe go into Emmett County. I'm not sure how that works, if we do that along, if that gets built to Emmett or however, but they did look kinda bad over. For whatever reason, I don't know why, but.
Are they on the same program as us, first brain?
E, EK, he's got EK four and EK two, I can look it up to see who's, um, control. For those, but do you do Emmett County also or not?
Yeah, we're actually doing that side of Emmett County this year, so.
Okay.
I mean, we're gonna be there on both sides.
I can check with who's the control and who you bill it to.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, that was my only, I was just wondering like.
I would, I would think especially if you are doing theirs, you should probably do ours. In Cassouth, bill it to us and then do theirs and bill it to them and the joint drains, we would still pay up both bills.
Right.
Um. Mark, dirty drains or that private?
Where?
That go into Emmett County, there's sections that are county and there's sections that are private, is that that section? That's private? That's really bad.
The map?
Yeah, I'm looking at the map. It goes into drain four in the, in the end, but there is a section in there that isn't county or drainage district facilities.
That last seven?
Yeah.
I remember it, I'm not positive, but we better look before you spray.
Yeah, yeah, you're right on that one, that is private, pretty good thing.
I think that's a private ditch, that's why it's never been sprayed.
Okay, cause I think it was that lap, that LB is the one that I was thinking of, for whatever reason, it goes up and stops. And I think we've worked.
LB.
L, the PAK one LB?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I was talking about, like it goes up and stops.
It goes into Emmett County.
It goes into Emmett County, it seems like the very end of it where it stopped where I noticed was kinda getting kinda brushed right then.
But I think in Emmett County is a drainage dis- facility, but in Cassouth County it's not.
Okay.
But I.
Cause I.
But I, you look that up, make sure.
I'm, I think I've been up there looking at that ditch and they were asking me about that and I think we looked back and it was private.
That's, that's not a memory from ten years ago.
Okay, yeah, I'm, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't even know, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll check that.
That comes higher up in drain four.
Yeah. But everything else is pretty good through there, uh, the one that, that same one that, uh. That PAK one that goes through like Whittmore, those sections really cut out trees, most of the bigger trees are gone. So, probably just a B, a regular application through there, I think we've treated it as those trees come out, so. It looks like all the way through that ditch, most of the bigger trees have come out of there.
Yeah.
Over the last few years or however long it's been, so, cause possibly the neat cut have been removed.
Was this a older map that you had and then you added on the L seven?
Uh.
For drain four, is, is that blue?
That would've been an older map that I just kinda copied from, so, with that L seven, yeah, questionable if we do that or what, if not.
Yeah, Marge will check to make sure it's district facilities, cause I question whether it is.
Yeah, cause I just, I'm just been going on like some more maps I got, you know.
That would be, that would be L seven.
Learning them as I go.
Pretty sure that's L seven.
It could be lap seventy-one, lap seventy-one open ditch that comes down, but I'll look at, I'll look and see.
I'll find it here in a second, cause that's.
From my memory, right, there's sections that is drains, there's different facilities and there's miles that aren't.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that's through four, five, um. Yeah, that's lateral seventy-one, open ditch.
And then the sections six and seven, I believe that is private.
Six and seven are?
Mm-hmm.
Me?
But I'll, I'll check them out.
Okay.
Cause it, it is in drain four, but yeah, I feel there's.
Then we get in Emmett County and I thought it was private ditch here.
No, it's, well.
In Emmett?
Yeah, there is, there is a little bit of a ditch there, it goes right along the.
It goes into Emmett a little bit.
Yeah.
Or does it go?
Yeah, on the other side of that.
No, it does go up along the road on our side and then crosses.
Yeah.
Um.
I think you're right, Marge, sixty-seven is private in minutes.
Yeah, they're.
Drainage district facility through five and nine. And ten.
Yeah, and that should be lap seventy-one.
Seventy-one?
Yeah, lateral seventy-one.
You all adjust that?
I don't think it's ever been sprayed.
Well, that might be one that I was looking at and this is like, wow, why is there so many trees, you know, once you get further closer into the Emmett area? And then it keeps continuing on and it was, it's pretty ugly.
It is ugly.
Yeah.
You got another one up on the north end of the county that's ugly, they just got turned over to us.
Oh, one sixty-five.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, um. That would be, that would be on the east half.
Is that something new, something new that would be addressing then, starting to work, starting to work on it or?
I don't know, cause there's a lot of trees up there, it, it's probably gonna have.
Cut out, oh good.
It's probably gonna have to be a bigger project.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll get them with spray, I mean, you'd get some of the smaller ones maybe, but.
You're gonna have to have a public hearing.
That's gonna have to be a substantial project to get that cleaned up, I'm sure.
Have a public hearing and have all landowners come in and then agreed to cleaning it, because it, it's gonna be expensive.
Well, it's not, yeah. Sixty-five, make note of that for later.
So, what's your opinion on L seven, I don't know, we've got, our seventy-one, we've never really cleaned any of it.
It, it was part of the first clean out project, lap seventy-one in open ditch.
Was it?
When they did that clean out.
But do, have we cleaned the trees out of it since then?
I'm not sure, I don't believe.
I think there's quite a few trees growing in it, even in the first part. Did you, how big are they, you were just about saying?
Well, they're, it's, they're like bushy mulberries, so they, you know, most of them are, they look pretty big. I don't think like the trunks are too big on them yet to where like if we did spray them.
It would kill them.
We could kill them, yeah, anything up to like about fifteen feet, other than that, it's kinda, if they, by the time they die, it'll probably cause more of a problem than. You know, they're probably to the point where they didn't cut out as well.
Well, now would be the time to spray them, huh?
I mean, we could always go in through and, you know, through those few sections and spray everything that's, that we can spray, you know.
Well, yeah.
Too much of a problem.
Let's double check to make sure that's county facility and then if it is, should be sprayed, but. If it's not, then.
If they've been working there before for tree cleanups or whatever, it'd be nice to keep it out instead of letting them overgrow again, cause it really doesn't take very long.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm good with approving it with the checking it on the backside, make sure.
The lap seventy-one.
Make sure that lap seventy-one's.
You're good.
Appropriate to be sprayed.
Is that a motion?
Any, everyone good with that?
Yep.
Okay, then yeah, I make motion to approve the quotes, is there a second? Okay, thanks, Roger, any further discussion, besides what we've already had? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay, motion carried unanimous, thanks.
Can I get a signature on this, kind of for my records as well?
Yeah.
Whoever needs it, right here.
You want me to sign?
Just sign and date it, that way I, I can put it in our file and keeps me straight at the office a little bit.
Summer, everything lined up?
Started our guys yesterday, the coldest day of the winter, so they weren't too thrilled about that, but.
Here.
Last day of winter too, today's.
Well, they're saying, uh, ninety percent chance of snow on Thursday, so.
Couple inches Thursday night and, uh.
Couple feet, central wind radio station.
I've seen eight to ten over the weekend.
I got my sled out of storage, out of the loft, dusted it off, put the cover on it and put it back, so if it snows now, I'm not gonna be very happy about it. But, uh, no, the guys are working, uh, actually got a couple of new guys, so, I think we're up to, I think we got. Six guys coming, had one guy, he had to find work over the winter time, but he's gonna be back, he had to put in his a week's notice or whatever, so. We'll be up to around ten employees starting out, so. Keep everybody happy and keep them busy, should be alright.
Keep everybody happy, you're on our activation, you shouldn't be sitting over here.
I don't know, I'm sure I'll have enough problems down the road, but, either way, we'll get to it, so, alright.
Sounds good, thank you. Alright, um. Next up is discussing our dr- internal drainage policy for, um. Landowner notifications and, um. This is kinda piggybacking off our discussion before, I was gonna find, here's our drainage policy, um. Sure, well.
Well, that's okay, I mean, um, well, okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
We don't have much, um.
Just another hour.
Yeah.
At least hour and a half, um. So, I didn't know if anyone had any other thoughts, otherwise, um, I can try and put some language together as far as, um. Notification, but I think we should send out a postcard when we do the, um. Bid letting for when we receive the bids and then usually the week after we consider the bids and actually vote on it, so those two items would be. Just simple time and date and short little paragraph saying these.
Description.
These are the times we'll review and consider bids for the project that. They've already had the public hearing, we can reference the public hearing date, but I mean, just a short, simple postcard for a little bit of information would be. I think something that would.
Where would the postage be paid of?
The drain, it's, it's all a cost of the district, I mean, it's no different than any other hearing, but, um, it would be paid by the. By the district, but they're the ones that are getting the benefit of that postage, so I think they're more than willing to pay for that, um. It should be a fairly small cost. In the grand scheme of things, but didn't know if anyone had any other thoughts or suggestions for language or anything like that.
Keep the short, sweet information.
Just be consistent, do it for one drain, do it for all of them.
Well, and that's, that's where if we put it in our policy, it would apply to everything and then. Between the engineers and Marge and everyone, we can all be on the same page and get stuff sent out, so.
As long as you, you get the date for the bid letting and the open approval in the same postcard.
Right.
Oh, yeah, it should be, should be fairly.
Don't make it too cumbersome and confusing.
No. You can have just the simple references to the project so that everyone, I mean, obviously the district number, um. You can say the date of the public hearing, that way they can core reference it back in their mind. Um, I mean.
Chairs are not conducive to sitting forever.
You chose them, remember that.
You were holding, well, except for the two and a half.
I, I didn't.
I didn't know.
You would like the other choices, worse, worse. Roger, you gotta jump up and cheer every once in a while.
Well, yeah, just get that muscle from going boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, but.
Sounds good, put something together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and get something typed up here and then we'll put her on the agenda for next week to approve, just wanna see if anyone had any. Other thoughts or ideas that way.
Would be too much to put like a little graphic on it, kinda show them the location of the drains or anything like that. They, they'll already know.
That's a lot extra time.
They would have that with the public hearing.
And that's where if you reference back to the public hearing, then they can flip through their mail or their, their documents they keep and they can go back to it.
And being, it's their land, they're gonna know where it is.
If they, well, yeah, I mean, some absentee landowners or people that have multiple farms, it's good to reference. Critical information, but we don't need to make it fancy, um, if they've got questions, they all know how to pick up the phone and call, so.
Yeah, just have a telephone number of the drainage clerk.
Any complaints, call Marge.
I saw a lot of them right there.
I think since Josh wants to explain it, anyone with questions could call Josh, Josh or. Anyone in the city limits of Algonas should have.
Yep.
Time to answer those questions. But no, I mean, if we keep it short and simple, everyone, everyone that's involved will. Very likely know what's going on and it's just an extra little bit of information because. Most people don't pay attention to our agendas on a weekly basis and that's one topic that would be of interest to them when they're. Writing the check for the project, so, I mean.
I think it'd be nice if they were there for the bid letting, so they could express their opinion.
And that's where the first week when we just review them, I mean, they could always watch the video at home on a. Thursday evening when they're bored, but the week, the following week, once they're all reviewed and everyone's. Got the numbers and that's when we, when we actually consider it, that's when it would be important for people to be here so they could express their opinions.
Spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, I mean, I think they'd be willing to come and give an opinion.
Yeah, I mean, when you go through the process of a improvement project, especially with multiple options, like we're doing more and more now. Um, it only makes sense to send a postcard for a dollar, I mean, it. By the time you s- look at all their other costs in the project, it's, it's a drop in the bucket and it's, it should be worthwhile information to them, so. I think we can keep it simple and not lose too much sleep over it, as long as it goes to everyone and be consistent, I think we'd be good, so. Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay, um, drainage repair request, we got a couple, looks like Marge.
I got two, ones in German township behind that Seelmann's house, um, drain. Thirty-five eighty-nine and the other one is in Burke. Close to Burton, they want to do some improvements on their sanitary system and the bank is sloughed off and I'm going. There's trees growing inside the bottom of the ditch and I'm not so sure there was, wasn't a beaver dam there at one time that caused the infestation. That never got taken out.
Probably.
So, I would suggest that, uh, we clean the trees out and get the open ditch opened up so they can actually do some work on their sanitary sewer. And the other one is just a simple beaver dam, it's a mile from my house and I just thought maybe I'd send my son over there to take it out. He's got the extended whole set in there, it wouldn't be any. Transportation services that we're needing to drive over and do it in an hour and be done.
Yeah.
I got all this bond and insurance information here, is that alright, Martin? I'll hand it over to you. They need to head to the pursuit place to take care of the place.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimous.
I have rights, I'll do the Burke one, cause he's doing.
The trees.
The trees and stuff, cause he's doing the work on the sanitary.
And I think, yeah, I think there's a private tile project in that area too. And then, do you want a quick break, Josh, before we do our discussion or? Be good. Right on the phone.
Coffee, please.
Rodney B. stretches lead.
Well, how about we take a couple minute break? We'll come back and finish up with discussion. Board reports. Thanks, Marge.
Yeah, thank you.
You got any coffee left in there?
Not much. I had too many papers on here.
So much for that agenda.
Yep, that one there's done. So what, you sent the wrong number.
Oh.
Did you get it?
Oh, ah. No, here, what's, is that her number there?
Yeah.
Let me just text her and let her know she got the wrong person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
You bet.
Listen up.
So if they want you to go tonight at nine thirty?
Yeah.
Yep. So just make sure.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you, no, I did not get that. I knew it was tonight though.
Okay.
Nature calls, you better answer, cause if you don't, shit is nasty towards you. It's pretty nice, huh?
It's supposed to be windy though.
Yeah.
Forty mile an hour winds again. Yep, I'll check it, but you turn it off. Yep, yep. I'll be there, yep. Okay, thank you. Where are you going?
Well, it's in.
It's sitting, what's down there?
Some friends have bought a house down there.
Never been before.
Do they love a house down there?
Driving down or flying? Flying?
Go to Atlanta, I'm in Atlanta. It's like twenty-five minutes from your house.
Yeah.
Kyle Lofer.
I didn't see him.
Right there.
Oh, here he is.
Okay.
We did have somebody come and take papers out for Roger's district.
Catching any fish on the river?
Yeah.
So, the list is grown.
Three?
Four?
Six, seven, three.
Three.
Alright, we are ready for board discussion here. Jack, do you have anything?
Monday have a uh like the we have the bankrupt for each other, so. I think the word is uh renewing the basically contract with the state. For our budgeting.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do more interesting this week, other than drainage issues.
I didn't have any of these. I, I had no meetings, met with a guy on Friday over by West Bend, he wanted to drive me around and look at the roads, that was about it.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll pass this down, um, I got it at ISAC, I honestly don't even remember where, but it's stuff with opioids, so don't know if that's anything you want with Board of Health, Jack, but.
If you take it though.
Do you have something else, Roger?
I guess we have opioid money that we could spend, but do we know we can even spend it on yet?
Oh yeah, I mean, there's, there's lists of, or like qualified things, I've asked about that a couple times, if we had any plans, but yeah, I mean, we're gonna need to get going on some of that here. I know other, others are starting to do some stuff with it, but.
Has any county been doing anything with opioid money yet?
I haven't heard.
I, I know some have some things in the works, I haven't heard specifics or anything that's started yet, but um I haven't asked that question to supervisors for a little bit here, um that, that packet that I brought from the NACO um conference in West Virginia was something that we could do with opioid funds because it's something that um basically it's a way to dispose of drugs and opioids that'd be out in the community, so it, that'd be project that we could potentially put funds towards, um.
North Iowa Community Action hasn't said anything yet, Carter, or any, any.
I haven't heard anything for opioids.
Just curious if they ever said anything, they're always into all the federal programs.
Right.
I think.
That's a question I can ask.
That'd be a good question, if any other county.
Yeah, cause this wouldn't be a federal program though, this would be.
They're always into all the programs, did I know what any federal programs?
Yeah. Well, um, I guess I'll go back to ISAC here, um, there was County Day at the Capitol Wednesday, then Thursday, Friday was the um spring conference. Friday morning, Phil and I were asked for, uh, we were on the panel for giving presentation about EMS, what we did here in the county and I know Phil's already gotten questions from other counties, I had gotten questions from other counties before, so we had a hour-long session in the beginning, then there is another um discussion after that, it was mostly led by a individual from West Des Moines, um and he had he had his slides and information and then there were some questions asked that all of us kinda responded to a little bit and that went well, I've gotten a couple other phone calls asking for information after that as well, but that was good discussion, um. There was quite a bit of talk about House File seven eighteen and we had Kerry Johnson there from Department of Management for that, um. Anything you need, should highlight from that, I guess, we've talked about it quite a bit here.
I'll kinda talk about it with their manager when it gets to mine.
Oh, okay, um. Yeah, I guess we skipped over, sorry about that.
That's alright.
Um. And then, uh, there was with, oh, where was I gonna go? I think it was a different topic. With the EMS conversation, after, after the presentation, I was asked a question by Steve Kinkel, actually Shelby County, asked if like the voter approved referendums like EMS, if TIF districts paid for them or not? And, so I had stopped at the assessor's office and asked them some questions on Friday afternoon and we looked at Gold Eagle as an example and they do not, so. Something to keep in the back of our minds, um, not saying it's bad necessarily, but it's, it is something to keep in, in consideration because that is the TIF does pull all that stuff and, and Steve said probably twenty, thirty years ago, they realized that was um an issue for schools, for voter approved things that the state does not backfill and they got legislation um approved that kinda fixed that, so I don't know, so now they do get it for schools, for voter approved things, even in.
Even in the district?
Yep, so that's what he had told me at least, um. So, uh, that's, which, on the Gold Eagle stuff, I did have things for schools, I'm guessing those were the voter approved.
I guess I have an issue with the twenty percent rollback on windmills and all the other infrastructure in the county that we don't get the tax at a rate that we promised we could tax at.
Twenty, wasn't that thirty?
Thirty, yeah.
We can, we still go up to thirty percent.
Over a amount of years.
No, no, they rolled all the commercial properties back.
Yeah, yeah, but our percent of the valuation.
They shouldn't have included windmills, cause they were ruled back to begin with.
Yep, and, and Winnebago had issues with a project that they TIF'd and they repowered.
Right.
But from what I was told, it sounds like other counties waited for clear guidance from the state instead of dropping them back down to zero when projects repowered and now there is stuff um through legislation that clarifies that when they repower, they do not go back down to zero.
But if they put up a new tower, they do go back down to zero, it's only if they put the head on.
Um.
They put a new tower up.
If it's on the same site, they do not.
If they put new, new tower up, they can go back to zero, I was told.
What timeframe were you told?
Didn't matter.
No, like what, how recently were you told that?
Couple months ago.
I don't remember if it was a fix this legislative cycle or last, um, but it was after Winnebago's issues that they clarified that.
Issue that I was told.
From what I was told, if it's on the same site and under the same permit, it doesn't change. You miss out on the potential new value of that, but it doesn't go back down to zero if it's on the same site. If it's a whole new farm or a new, new structure, then it would just be a new project, but if you tear one down and build it back, if it's on the same site, it's supposed to stay.
That makes sense, cause you got your foundation there.
Yep.
So it should.
It's not what I was hoping for.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, um. So, could be some more research on that too, but um just food for thought for everyone.
We should. They're talking about changing license some of that up more.
There's a crane set up right now.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe.
Probably.
Seems like.
Well, they've already changed.
Pay attention to what they're doing.
South ones.
Yeah.
Oh, by us, they changed main barriers, you know, there's ten of them that need barriers.
Didn't last.
So they did haze this north one. Yeah, they said they had ten of them, but that's all I know of that.
Seven to ten, yeah.
No, it's supposed to last thirty or more.
Thirty-five years is the lifetime.
They have to be crazy expensive, the size of those.
Oh, no kidding.
Yep, um. So, yeah, I mean, that might be something we address and clarify in the ordinance too, um, for repowering stuff. Um, also had an executive committee meeting for C I J D C, met in Webster City Tuesday afternoon. Had a discussion on quite a few things and we have our full board meeting this Friday. Had a discussion on quite a few things, and we have our full board meeting this Friday. I think that's, I think that's all I got, plus I'm, yeah, most of it was ISAC this last week, so.
Okay, me?
Yep.
Um, next Tuesday, you have a big day. We have the regular meeting in the morning. Um, the agenda so far is discussion for the solar ordinance, so just a reminder. And then at one o'clock in the afternoon, we have the budget hearing for the proposed property tax levy. It has to be a separate hearing with a separate agenda, and then at two thirty, you have the landowner meeting for DD one twenty-five and CM forty-one in Minnesota.
Okay.
Uh, bluer. Um, so a reminder of that, and then House File seven.
Is everyone planning on making that one?
Leave it Tuesday for the proxy.
Okay.
I'll plan to make it.
Okay.
We got one twenty-nine, two thirty at.
Bluer, yeah.
Yeah, it's at the Egg Center Conference Room.
Yep.
At the Egg?
Egg Center Conference Room.
Do we have that, oh, four fifteen South Road?
I didn't write down the address, but.
I wrote down that, uh.
No, that strip.
Is that right?
It's right, right as you go in.
Yeah, on the east side of the road.
There's a pharmacy there.
Yep.
It's right, right in there, like that strip mall or whatever.
Yeah.
Before, before the first roundabout, where come and go and everything is, it's before that. It's right across from the Monument Place.
Okay, to the east.
On the east side of the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just up there.
Oh.
And then, um, House File seven eighteen required a mailing that has to go out by the twentieth, so it was huge. Department of Management asked that all cities and schools had all their information for the Department of Management site by the fifth, um, so we could get everything compiled, and then when they were ready for us to upload, um, they would let us know. So Friday, um, was the day that we were supposed to upload at four o'clock. Well, we got an email from the Department of Management that there was an issue, um, so four thirty. So at four thirty, we were, maybe a little after four thirty, able to let upload, so we had all our information in, ready to go. We had already done a pre-test with, um, Master's Touch, who's doing our mailing for us, and everything went pretty good. We did have an issue. Solutions was able to fix that, like, Wednesday or Thursday, and so we thought we were ready to go, which we weren't. Um, so Christine and I were here till eight thirty Friday night. We sent it to Master's Touch. They got us the proof back. We got it all proofed and ready to go, and we heard back from Master's Touch yesterday that our mailing has been out. So our mailing is out in perfect time. It's, they're due to be out by the twentieth, so we're doing good. I know other counties are not doing so good. I've been seeing other counties are struggling and having some issues. So, um, we're very happy that ours went smooth and that that is out. We know that once it starts reaching landowners, we're gonna have a lot of questions, because they're not gonna understand what they're seeing. Um, so, uh, we're getting prepared to have a lot of phone calls, so. Um, if you look at the notice, there's gonna be part of it that says that it's, it looks like their property taxes are going down. Um, and actually, the levy rates are increasing, so there's gonna be some confusion there, so hopefully we'll be able to explain that to them, so.
This, do you do they send their assessment schedule plus the levy rate, or they just send it?
It, so it will have on there a breakdown of, um, it'll, so whatever school district they're in, it'll have that on there. And then it'll have the county, and then it will have if they have a TIF district, um, and then, um, there'll be a breakdown of how much of their taxes go to the school, how much goes to the county, how much, so they'll see that on there also. So, but no assessments or anything like that. This is, and on there, it will have, um, when the hearing date is for each entity. So like, it will say our tax levy, March twenty-sixth at one o'clock, and that, like, the school, whatever school district, when their hearing is, so that they are able to go to those if they choose to. So that's all basically it is, is to let them know the dates and times of the hearings, and what those, what their tax notices kind of look like for each of those entities.
So the hospitals got their tax levy in, no?
Um, there's, the hospital isn't part of that. It's just schools, cities, and county.
The hospital's not part? Handholding is not part either?
Well, that's part of ours.
That's part of yours, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Yeah, because they use the same hundred thousand dollar valuation with the rollbacks, and there's a lot of things that stack on itself, and it's really confusing.
It is. So. Yeah. So, um, so we'll probably be getting calls about that. Otherwise, um, Friday is the deadline for anybody to turn in their papers if they want to run for supervisor, auditor, sheriff, or any of the, I think actually, the deadline for the state and government releases are already up, because those are at the state level.
Deadline to turn in is Friday?
Turned in this Friday. Yeah, we're open till five Friday. Um, anybody who wants to run has to have an invite by Friday.
No.
Has anybody turned in yet? I mean, we have people turning papers?
Yeah, we have. So, um, two for sheriff, two for Jax, uh, one for Rogers, two more that have taken out, um, so far, so.
Nobody took them out for you, though?
Nah.
Just me.
One for?
But that I know of anyways, so.
Well, who else besides you? Karen or Matt?
Sheriff.
Yeah, that's it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Attorney and recorder, and then we're all on a different cycle, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, very good.
That'll be our county office, I hope.
Yeah, so. So then, I think that's all I have.
Sounds good. I mean, anything else here? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We adjourned at nine fifty-eight. Thank you, everyone.